Welcome to the 2022 Weber County Commissioner Candidate Debate for Weber County hosted by the Weber Fraternal Order of Police. This is a recorded event that will be broadcasted live, technology permitting, to allow those who are unable to attend to view it later. My name is Derek Fisher and I am the President of the Weber Fraternal Order of Police. I represent officers and deputies from local agencies in Weber and Morgan Counties. Our lodge was named after the Weber River which runs through both counties. Our mission is to serve our members and the public. We provide relief events and activities and serve as representative to the administrations and city and county leaders. We also focus on building better relationships with the communities we serve through service projects, events, and community outreach. County Commissioners play a significant role in our communities and work with our sheriff on developing our public safety missions and goals and how we will complete those missions. They are the leaders who work to determine how our county operates and grows. We are happy to have all the candidates accept our invitation to attend this debate. The topic of this debate is public safety. All public safety team members in the public we serve were invited to attend and participate. Additionally, if it is deemed appropriate, the Weber FOP may at a later time invite the candidates back for another debate if it's appropriate. Important upcoming dates, the 2022 primary election will be held Tuesday, January 28, 2022. Ballots will be mailed to eligible voters starting June 7th tomorrow. The general election will be November 8th. More information on voting in Weber County in Utah can be found at weberelections.com and voteinfo.utah.gov. Questions were accepted via email before the debate. Questions for the debate were chosen based on the given topic and community requests. Due to having limited amount of time, not all questions may be asked in the debate. However, all questions not asked may be sent to each candidate to respond. Responses will be posted on the Facebook page. Introduction to the topic. Law enforcement is becoming a more undesirable career field for a multitude of reasons. Retirement rising to 25 years on a retirement plan is not competitive with surrounding states. Leniency was placed on offenders and stricter guidelines on enforcement. And officers are serving their community. And for each agency, the lack of value placed on the officers. Law enforcement agencies and correction staff within Weber County have a history of producing top-grade deputies and officers despite current negative view on law enforcement. Our moderators today are from the Weber State Debate Team. Both of them are three-year members of the team. Kyle Houseley is the Assistant Captain and Saxony Ruckman is going to be assisting him today. For the candidates, you can see in front of you here is a timer that Saxony will be controlling. You will have a minute and a half of your introductions and a minute to respond to each question. The timer again in front of you to watch as far as how much time you have left. I'm going to let them introduce the candidates and then they'll go through the rest of the Starting out, we're going to introduce the candidates for Seat A here. We first have Gage Frohrer. Please raise your hand just for the camera. All right. Shannon Frakis, who I believe may be joining us a bit later. John Thompson, please raise your hand. And as for Seat B, we have Sharon Bolos, please raise your hand, thank you. William Olson. And Brian Rowley. All right. With that all in mind, we'll get our introductions underway. Go ahead and take us away, Brian Rowley.
My name is Brian Rowley. I have lived in Weber County for just over a year. However, I decided to get into politics a few years ago during the pandemic when I decided the government had no idea what to do for its people. I am the Vice Chair of the Weber County Libertarian Party and a restaurant manager. My main goals for Weber County are to fix the homeless situation and the housing crisis as well as come up with ways to stymie what's going on with the exorbitant housing costs going on right now. Other than that, working with veterans. As an Army veteran myself, I think that we need to be doing more as a community to work with and help our veterans and make sure that they are taken care of. And that's it.
All right, thank you very much. William Olson, go ahead and take us away.
Thank you. I'm Bill Olson, candidate for Weber County Commissioner. I'm a retired serial entrepreneur, been in business my entire career. This is my first attempt at public office. I finished my career as a CEO of a molecular diagnostic company. I've secured nine patents in DNA chemistry and I understand this COVID science pretty well. I got a little irritated with unelected bureaucrats' lack of knowledge of science as well as the Constitution and that's what got me interested in running for this position. I'm looking forward to working with the community and the county with respect to public safety and public health and see if we can't do a little bit better job of getting the truth out there to the people so they can make informed decisions. I am a top priority with public safety and public security. Without public safety and public security, we have problems attracting families and businesses to our community. And I think it's important that we support our public safety and public security folks. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
My name is Sharon Bolos. I'm a candidate for Weber County Commission, Seat B. Was born and raised in Weber County, went right here at Weber High for high school and then graduated from Weber State University with a bachelor's degree in accounting. Since the time of my graduation, I've been a small business accountant and helped numerous small business owners within Weber County give them the opportunity to focus on what they're good at and their expertise while I take care of what I consider the fun stuff that some other people don't like. I continue to work for four small businesses today. I, like I said, was raised in North Ogden, raised my family in West Haven. I just completed my second term as the Mayor of West Haven where I fell in love with public service and getting to know the community, getting to know the partners that we had there in West Haven. One of our partners there is the Weber County Sheriff's Office and I had the opportunity to work very closely with the sheriffs and their deputies and helped to facilitate law enforcement needs in West Haven. My respect for first responders started out at a high level. Once I started working more closely with first responders in those agencies, it really elevated my respect. Law enforcement and public safety are my top priorities as a Commissioner. I also want to focus on our water issues and planning for our growth.
All right, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, I'm John Thompson. My family, where I moved out to Utah in 1961, first spent the first two months in Brigham City and then moved down to Ogden. Graduated from Ogden High School and went to Weber State where unfortunately for the first year, I majored in fraternity and minored in the sorority. All my friends went on their LDS mission and I wanted to be an RN, so I joined the Marine Corps and after three years became a returned Marine. From there, I graduated from Weber in history with a minor in police science. I then went back into the Marine Corps and served another 25 or so years and retired from there. During that, one of those periods, I got two masters in human relations and management. I then worked for the state of Utah and retired from the state about four or five years ago and have always been interested in politics and government. And I got into this race because I was concerned with the growth issue and the water issue. And that's why I filed for this C-Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and take us away.
Good evening. Gage Frohrer, I'm the current Weber County Commissioner. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. I'm a lifelong resident of Weber County, fifth-generation resident of Ogden Valley. Graduated from Weber High quite a while ago. In fact, it was the old Weber High. And you can take a look at a picture of myself and my wife out in the hallway when you leave. I showed it to the sheriff as he came in. I'm a small business owner, have done that for the past, that's been my life's work. And I also served in the legislature for 12 years where we impacted the community and a lot of law enforcement bills and other bills that helped this state grow and prosper. The past four years, I've served as your County Commissioner and I'll talk as we go on the success we've had working with the current sheriff and working with our department heads across the county in making sure that we do what's right to protect the interest of the citizens in Weber County and make sure that we protect the hard-earned taxpayer dollars and that they're spent in the right manner. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you all very much. All right, now that we've gone through and done our introductions, we'll start getting into the meat of this debate here. I'll be going through and asking a variety of questions and each candidate will have one minute to respond. If another candidate is addressed during this answer, that candidate will then have a minute to respond to that as well. And I also have the ability to ask follow-up questions if I deem it necessary. With that in mind, let's get started. So the first question on our docket today is, what will be your top priority and what will you accomplish in the first 90 days if elected? We'll go ahead and start with William Olson.
Thank you. Well, there's an awful lot to learn, I found out in this campaign with respect to the duties and responsibilities of county commissioners. From what I understand, each Commissioner is given a portfolio of groups and associations within the county to kind of manage or be the front part of that management. So I imagine there's a lot of information for me to learn, a lot of organizations for me to learn about. I have spent some time in my campaign getting to know Weber Human Services and the way in which our county addresses the homeless situation. I've had an opportunity to tour the jail and meet with the sheriff and learn the operations that are going on with law enforcement. So I really don't have an agenda with respect to what I'll do in 90 days, but I can imagine within 90 days in the office, I'm going to learn an awful lot about my responsibilities and then go after those responsibilities with my, with rigor, I guess is the best way to put it, and do my best to represent the citizens of Weber County.
All right, thank you very much.
My top priority is law enforcement and public safety. That has always been a priority for me, even in my service as the Mayor. I think it should be an elected official's top priority regardless of where we serve. So that has always been on the top of my list. What I'd like to accomplish in the first 90 days is to meet with the department heads. And while each Commissioner does have a portfolio that they oversee, I would like to meet with all the department heads and get an understanding of each person's responsibilities as it relates to the other Commissioners. I also would like to focus on my top three issues. Public safety, also the water issues. In the first 90 days, I'd like to work and meet with water providers and understand their take on the situation that we're in. And then regarding growth and planning in our county, I'd like to review the hopefully recently adopted general plans for Western Weber County in the Upper Valley and make sure that I understand those and how that we should proceed with enacting those.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead, John Thompson.
I would first, of course, trying to understand the relationship I have with the other departments and based on what other issues that came up during the general election, I would certainly be looking at those right off the bat. Secondly, I'm interested in the growth and the quality of life that that growth affects here in Weber County. So that would be also one of my priorities. What I could accomplish in 90 days, that's going to be another question. And lastly, I guess, I would be looking at the things that really don't make the news in the newspaper or that people may not want to talk about and then try to head off situations before they become problems. So those are the priorities I would be concentrating on in 90 days, which I'm sure is going to go by very quickly.
Thank you very much.
So the answer, the top priority is obviously for any elected official should be, how do we best protect those very rare and taxpayer dollars that come into the county and the state? That's what I did for 12 years in the state, is look first about how those taxpayer dollars are spent. The budget will be prepared and actually approved prior to January 1 when whoever is elected takes office, so the budget will be set. The important priority after that is to make sure our department heads have the proper resources that are needed so they can continue to provide those best, high-quality services to the county population that so well deserve them. As you probably know, in that budget, approximately 26% goes to public safety. It's important that we keep that ratio up. It's important that we have continue, as I've done in the past four years, working with our current sheriff, that those dollars are spent in areas that benefit the public and benefit the public safety officers we have working. So priority obviously has to be about how we spend taxpayers' hard-earned dollars.
Thank you very much. Back around we go.
I already kind of started with my top priority, working with homeless and veterans. What I would want to do in the first 90 days would be figure out areas of waste as far as tax money is concerned and figure maybe a new set of eyes could find some wasteful dollars that are going out there. I would, like the rest said, try to figure out what exactly what my role would be and try to hopefully have, have my role be what I've been campaigning for it to be, to be where I'm working with the homeless and the vets. As far as a lot of the other stuff, a lot of my plans are, you know, four, eight, 10-year plans, but I would like to get those started during my first 90 days. About it.
All right. Thank you very much. Onto our next question. What is more important, acting in response to the will of the people or acting in the way county officials believe is the best course of action? We'll go ahead and start with Sharon Bolos.
Thank you. Acting in response to the will of the people is of course a top priority for elected officials. But what that means is understanding their concerns and understanding how to address those concerns. Acting in the way county officials believe is the best course of action means elected officials relying upon those who are experts in their field, understanding what it takes to address the public concerns, and then facilitating some kind of partnership between the desires and wishes and what they feel is best. When I think about public safety, which of course is the audience we're addressing, this becomes very imperative because I'm not an expert in public safety and the community for the most part are not experts in public safety. It's very important to know and understand how our public safety officials feel and what they feel they need and then to address the public's concerns in regard to those limitations.
All right, thank you very much.
One of my favorite political science questions. Used to deal with this instructing high school seniors and adult friends. Overall, with all things considered, all facts, evidence, everybody being truthful about an issue, I will always probably go and lean with the second one. That is the individual's conscience that the elected representative of whatever political entity he or she is representing must go with his or her conscience. I am a firm disbeliever in group think. If you follow the national politics, of course, with a former individual and taking retribution against anybody that voted against him on January 6th, that's the worst example of group think I can think of. Those people had an oath, they took an oath and they complied with that oath and they voted accordingly with that oath to include one of our senators here in Utah.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, obviously the will of the people is top priority, but how does a public official then take that, the will of the people, and put that into action? You do that by messaging and getting feedback from the public. We've done a great job in Weber County messaging what assets we have in this county. We've done a great job in messaging and asking for public input on the various issues that have come before us. At the end of the day though, it's up to the public official to take that public idea, that public messaging and make the decision they personally believe in. Sometimes that may go against what some people say, but they have to take that, both sides in perspective. One thing I've always learned, there's always two sides to every question. There's always two sides, no matter how thin you slice it, there's always two opportunities. So the will of the people is not always that easy to determine. We need to make sure that the public has the opportunity to respond, but at the end of the day, the public official makes that decision.
All right, thank you very much. Back we go.
I believe that the will of the people is not necessarily the needs or the liberties of the people. A lot of people want a lot of things that they don't understand the consequences of what they get. You'll see that a lot in cities that actually defunded their police departments, now they want them back. But obviously, the will of the people needs to be taken into effect and as a libertarian, I can say, you know, for the most part, I let people do what they want to do and be a good person. County officials, they also have a say and as I've learned in my leadership and management experience, sometimes you just gotta sound like the jerk, but you gotta do what's best for the people and other times you gotta stand down and lose your pride and let the people tell you what needs to be done.
All right, thank you.
Well, I think the will of the people is extremely important and the proper role of government in my mind is indeed public safety and law enforcement. Without that, we'd be protecting our own assets ourselves. So I think the will of the people is to have proper public safety and proper law enforcement. That's why we rely on the professionals like our current Sheriff Arbahn and the way in which he manages his Sheriff's Department and his jail. He's the only entity in the county that does a zero-based budgeting. I think that's something we ought to consider with some of the other institutions in our county. But quite frankly, we have to rely on the expertise of our officials who are elected and who are assigned based on their expertise. And oftentimes, the will of the people can be shaped with that expertise. But I think because it's the proper role of government, I don't think there's a lot of disagreement with the will of the people with respect to proper public safety. So this one seems to be a little bit of an easier one for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So a concern of a lot of citizens is how growth is handled, particularly now with water shortages going around. With that in mind, how should our water needs be addressed and fixed? So we're going to go ahead and start with John Thompson on this one.
A tough question. There are 262,000 right now residents in Weber County. Growth is the issue and in my opinion, that growth though also has to be balanced with the quality of life. If we want to keep decreasing resources or allocations of resources, is that fair to the people that were here before or can we try to find a way that we also maintain equality of life and keeping down the population? The water, I don't know where we're going to get it from, so the only option right now is to allocate it and to limit certain activities that use the water. It's not something that we can make, so that would be the tougher one. In terms of the housing needs, that's a question also for all government entities within the county and I would be receptive, I don't have an answer right now, but I would be certainly receptive to possible solutions to that.
All right, thank you very much. Onto Gage Frohrer.
So I've answered this on a couple other debates. Obviously, I think it's very necessary to understand that the state controls water rights. We as county officials are a political subdivision of the state of Utah and we abide by their code. We abide by the Constitution, which has given the rights of water to the state of Utah. Recently, the state of Utah came out with six or seven bills and $350 million for drought resistance training and information, basically ways that the state and the counties and the citizens could conserve water. Weber County currently fully supports that. We're looking at our different venues, our assets, and asking our department heads to conserve water. For example, the ice sheet, we've gone to a zero landscaping. At the end of the day, we need to do what the state dictates. We need to make sure that we are biding by the drought instructions that Weber Basin gives us, which has control over that water. And that's really what the Weber County position needs to be because we have no direct authority to control or take water rights away.
All right, thank you very much. Brian Rowley.
For me, I would say the water rights is unfortunate situation that we're dealing with. As, I may be mistaken, but when I bought my house, I was told I had to keep 90% of my lawn vegetated. One thing that I would think would definitely help with that would be allowing us to add more non-vegetative things in our lawns requiring less water. As for the growth that we're experiencing, unfortunately, I'm part of that because I couldn't afford to live in anywhere else other than Weber County. It's making it harder and harder for people. If I were to try to buy my house now, I wouldn't be able to afford it. So we definitely need to look at ways to keep housing down and come up with alternatives to renting $1,300 single-bedroom apartments.
All right, thank you very much.
So when our pioneer ancestors got here in the 1840s, they came to a desert. They were the first people in Northern America to really irrigate. Natural irrigation takes place back east. And those early pioneers who were willing to put their capital at risk and their time to move water from streams into the desert to grow our food, were awarded water rights. And as long as they continued to use those water rights for the beneficial use of growing food, they had access to those water rights. They were a priority prior to anybody else coming in and using water. The challenge we have with water rights is 80%, of the water usage in Utah is agriculture. So this isn't a problem about watering lawns. This is about efficient irrigation. The challenge with these multi-generational families with these water rights is an investment in efficient irrigation. We have a billion dollars in surplus in Salt Lake. I would use the county commission platform to work with our legislators to put together some low-interest loans, grants, and federal money to incite these multi-generational folks to invest in this efficient irrigation. It will free up a lot more water for the state of Utah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so first, my position on housing needs. My oldest daughter just purchased a house. She's the first one of my children to do so and I was astounded by the cost. I think that obviously most of that is driven by the market, but I want to make sure as a county commissioner that the county is not responsible for any of those increasing costs. If there are regulations or other things that are standing in the way of smaller construction companies, then we need to make sure that those additional requirements are removed so that those additional costs to the builder don't get passed on to our homebuyers. I also think that we need to provide a variety of housing, both in unincorporated Weber County and hopefully all of the cities are doing the same. Addressing the water needs, I think that Weber County needs to be the example. I would like to take a look at all of our facilities and make sure that we're not wasting water and then work on educating the public on how they can conserve water because I think every member of the public wants to be part of the water conservation effort. We need to share those ideas on how to do so.
All right, thank you very much. All right, onto our next question. What is your record working with and supporting law enforcement? Go ahead and start with Gage Frohrer.
That's a great question. So I'm going to take my experience with law enforcement back to the State House when I was in the legislature. I actually sponsored some bills that helped public safety. Some of you may remember that years ago, we had an issue with what they called spice, which is a derivative of marijuana that was causing a lot of issues with our kids and sometimes older generation. Law enforcement came to me, Public Safety Commissioner, and asked me if I'd be willing to run a bill, which I ran, and then actually funded that bill for enforcement. Because of that action, because of several other bills, I was actually given what they call an honorary colonel for the Highway Patrol because of my work ethic and because of what I accomplished for Highway Patrol for public safety in the 12 years that I was with the State House of Representatives. So I'm very proud of what we accomplished. Again, I support public safety. I think if you look at my record from a state perspective and also from the county perspective, you'll see that what I say is factual.
All right, thank you very much.
For me, I really don't have much of a record working with law enforcement. I have always tried to back them and stand behind them and, you know, put out the support that I've had for them. I just have never had the opportunity to get out there other than... I've had for them. I just have never had the opportunity to get out there, other than some of the auctions and stuff that they do to help support them. So I would really enjoy the opportunity to work with them more than what I have had. And I've got a lot of ideas of what we can do to keep them safe and make their job a little easier. Hopefully, those get to come to light.
Thank you very much.
I grew up in Southern California raising horses. Some of the horses we raised were double-registered saddle-bred, Western saddle-bred Palominos. My stepfather rode for the Long Beach Mounted Police. They were search and rescue on horseback, and they led the Rose Parade every year with their silver saddles. They were called the Silver Saddle Brigade. So we grew up with law enforcement in our family. I'm 68 years old today. I've never been in jail. I respect the rule of law. I studied constitutional law in college in the 70s, and I immensely respect law enforcement. I haven't had an opportunity to work directly with law enforcement, but I have had an opportunity to witness some of the operations going on in our sheriff's office and down in our jail, and also in our North Ogden Police Department. So I'm looking forward to leveraging the expertise of our public safety officials and do some heavy blocking and tackling for them in terms of budgets and getting them the money that they need to provide the safety for our community.
As I said, West Haven City contracts with the sheriff's office for our law enforcement. And so over the course of my terms as the mayor, I worked closely with the sheriffs and worked on our budget. And I can tell you that the cost of law enforcement has increased dramatically over the last several years. And the important thing for me was to understand why, to understand what is it that you need that is so expensive. Sitting down with not only the sheriff, but the chiefs, and understanding their needs and why those needs are so expensive, has gone so far in my relationship with them, in my relationship with the public in West Haven, in helping them understand our rising costs. We have to listen to the professionals. We have to understand what they need to do their jobs, both the job that is mandated by the state and the job that they feel is important for public safety. Understanding what they need, I think, is the most important relationship that a commissioner can have.
Thank you very much.
I was a police science minor. I've always had an interest in law enforcement. And if I did not accept the commission back into the Marine Corps, I probably would have tried at least to get into law enforcement. Subsequent to that, during one tour for two years, my boss, the commanding officer, and I as the adjutant S1, we ran the military police office on the base, as well as the island brig. Subsequent to that, after I retired, I came back. I volunteered for the Weber County Sheriff's Office when they still had the Justice Court, as well as volunteered for a time with the Ogden Police Department. And other than that, I might, or I have and I do, make contributions to police organizations, police and sheriff organizations. And other than that, I do try to obey the law.
All right, thank you very much. Up next, we've got a little bit of a scenario. I hope you're all prepared. An officer who represents Weber County has a controversial use of force. How will you respond? We'll go ahead and start back over on this side with Brian Rowley.
We've seen this a lot over the last few years, officers using controversial use of force. A lot of times, that's a one-sided story. We don't hear both sides of it. As for me, I would make sure to take a look at the intentions of the officer and whether or not it just looks bad, or if it was bad, because this is one of those situations where the will of the people was generally incorrect, at least in my opinion, about some of these occurrences recently. And so I would make sure that before I said anything or made any decisions, that I would see every side of that situation and handle that appropriately without allowing shame to befall the department or any other officers at that time.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I think I would have to rely on the chain of command and the process in place for the superior officers to deal with this kind of behavior and reserve judgment until those investigations can be made and those judgments could be made. Obviously, it's a public relations problem if the public feels that law enforcement is using controversial force. But again, I don't see it as my role as county commissioner to stand up and make judgments and decisions prior to the process working itself out and allowing those professionals involved to get at the evidence and to make those judgments, and then present those judgments to the community. And I'll reserve judgment until then.
Thank you very much.
I would stay out of the way of the investigation. There's a process for that, and I wouldn't form any opinion until that was completed. Also, as a commissioner, I believe there's one commissioner who's over public relations, and that should be the commissioner who is relaying information to the public. If that's me, I'll do so in a professional manner. If that's not me, I will support the other commissioner who is in charge of that. But I think the most important thing a public official can do is to stay out of the way of that investigation and then to support the decision that is made. Along the way, the public wants to know answers. We get that. And sometimes, that even warrants an interim comment or an interim statement. That's okay. The public needs to be informed if they want to be informed. And so we need to help them understand that process as it unfolds. But ultimately, wait until the decision is made, support that, and relay that in a professional manner.
Thank you very much.
Term was used previously, chain of command. I would certainly follow that. If I, as the commissioner, had the sheriff's department, and I'm assuming this is somebody other than the sheriff, involved in this use of force, then I would first ask him what he needed or wanted from me, and I would do my best to provide that to him. Otherwise, that sounds like a very internal investigation. And let's calm down and investigate it, see what happened. The individual officer himself or her, was she properly trained? Was she supervised? Was she following the procedures? Any previous records of these type of incidents? So other than that, basically, I would try to keep a supervisory oversight role and provide the assistance that's required by the people that are more directly involved with it.
Thank you.
Well, the people to my left are exactly right. We have a process in place in the county. It's called human resources. That human resource director has the responsibility, the obligation, to take on any issues like this and then report back to the commissioner that oversees that portfolio. Right now, in my portfolio, I oversee human resources. I also oversee the sheriff. So at this point in time, if this was to happen, our human resource director would do the investigation, would get the facts, and bring those to, after they've had the opportunity to fully investigate, talk to the sheriff, they would bring those, that investigation process to the commission if they thought further action was needed. Nine times out of 10, that action is handled internally before it ever comes to the commission, and that's the way it should be. We hire good people. We've got great people in public safety. We've got great people in public, in human resources. We should allow them to do their jobs. And I'm not a believer in overstepping. Those jobs, those people have a job for a reason. We let them do their job.
Thank you very much. All right. A significant concern of public safety is the decisions made by elected officials when they do not understand how public safety operates. With that in mind, would you be willing to attend a citizens' police academy? Starting with William Olson.
Sure. I think it's important to know exactly what's going on in the county. If you have an oversight responsibility or a management responsibility, you need to know how the process works and how the team is assembled and what the strategy and the execution plan is. And of course, elected officials get in trouble when they get a little ahead of their skis and start making decisions in areas of which they have no expertise. So I'm not that kind of public servant. I'm a business person. I look at the goals and objectives of the organization, the efforts to reach those objectives. And at that point, I would support the process. Again, that's really about the only way I can answer it. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much.
I would absolutely be willing to attend a citizens' academy and also to commit to ongoing engagement with law enforcement. I had the opportunity when I sat on the Weber Fire District Board of Directors, well, actually, the first one was when I was on the council, so I wasn't on that board. But I attended what they call Fire Ops 101. What an eye-opener for an elected official to get right into the situations that those firefighters face. Doing that with law enforcement would be just as beneficial. I've done ride-alongs with the lieutenants who have been assigned over West Haven. I've been very engaged in the past in how they served our city and absolutely value their opinions and want to be in their shoes to better understand those situations. It's the only way an elected official can truly make decisions. In the best interest of the public, in public safety, is to be in that position and have an understanding of what they face day in and day out.
Thank you very much. John Thompson.
First question, yes, I would be interested in attending a police academy. Secondly, military terminology, that's what we call staff work, I guess. So if there's gonna be a decision that comes before me, I certainly hope I'm gonna have that staffed, especially through the sheriff's department and anybody else that might be interested in law enforcement and the other departments within the county, before I make that decision. And if I'm told right off the bat that that's probably not the best thing to do, I think I'm gonna be receptive to take that advice and not vote for this particular issue going on.
Thank you very much.
Well, I've been very fortunate. The last three and a half years, I've worked almost on a weekly basis, if not more so, with our sheriff and his chiefs there on everything from personnel to new buildings to programming. You say it, you know, you name it for public safety. We've been involved with that. We've got a very active, engaged sheriff along with these staff. So because that's been in my portfolio, I've been very engaged and had the opportunity to be experienced and learn a great deal about public safety that's quite a bit different than the state side. At the same time, I think we have to look at outside our area as well, as I've attended other seminars with our Association of Counties, looked at what other counties have done with public safety. It's important to look outside sometimes our area to come up with good ideas. I come back and the sheriff as well has shared those ideas, because I think we're on the same page. We want to make sure that Weber County has the best public safety officials and the best support for those public safety officials in Weber County.
Thank you very much.
I would absolutely love to attend a citizens' police academy under the condition that I don't run further than across the street. I'm not in the Army anymore. As for a commitment to an open engagement with the public servants, I absolutely agree that that's necessary at all levels of, anyone who holds any public office needs to be at a good level ground with the police departments, their sheriff's department, and everything else. No one should be making decisions about something that they don't understand. And that's pretty much a simple fact there, so.
Thank you very much. All right, onto a bit of a double-barreled question here. I hope you're all prepared. What are your plans as commissioner to ensure that the sheriff's office has the right resources, pay, and benefits? And how will you ensure that Weber County remains competitive past an initial fix? So we'll go ahead and start with Sharon Bolos.
To ensure that they have the right resources, pay, and benefits, make public safety the number-one priority. That's all there is to it. If that's the number-one priority, we will find the budget necessary to help them to recruit and retain officers and to treat them fairly. How to ensure that Weber County remains competitive past the initial fix? I think this, there is a lot in law enforcement coming forward that I learned as the mayor in intelligence-based policing with drones, with what they call flock cameras and things like that, that don't take the place of officers, but help them do their job more efficiently. I think that's a way to, long-term, address the shortages that we see in law enforcement, making it easier for them to do their jobs without as many FTEs. Help them to get the intelligence that they need, the equipment they need, the resources they need, to be able to move forward in this profession and do the best that they can where we struggle to attract and retain.
Thank you very much. John Thompson.
Resources, I think I would start there. If we're gonna have the responsibility, or whatever, those law enforcement responsibilities we assign to the sheriff's office, we are obligated to provide them those resources. And if that means, you're saying by pay and benefits or talking tax increases, I'm for tax increases to make sure those resources to include pay and benefits are provided. With my limited internet skills, I did look something up here since of the sponsor of this debate. And if I read the information correctly, Weber County Sheriff's Department and Weber County Law Enforcement is one of the best in the state, also nationally ranked, is one of the best in the country. So there is something being done correctly there. I don't think it always goes with pay and benefits. It's where you live, it's who your bosses are, it's your training, and all sorts of other things that also should be considered along with that.
Thank you very much.
We're doing a great job, or you are doing a great job, Sheriff.
Gage Froh, take it away.
Thank you. So this is a huge issue in the county, as you all know. Last July, we were faced with a number of people in public safety, the sheriff's office leaving for other opportunities with other agencies. We sat down and made a substantial increase in ongoing funding, so we could maintain as many officers as possible. We continue to do that. We'll be looking at that again this coming July, and we anticipate another increase to make sure that we can preserve those great people we have in service. At the same time, we have to look at the efficiencies. We've asked everybody in the county that works there to be more efficient. The drone program, the software program, the sheriff's instituted, all lead to more efficiency, which means we could take those ongoing dollars and spend those on personnel resources, which is what we have to do. I'm not in favor of raising taxes. I think we have the efficiency. I think we have the savings with our rainy day fund that we've been able to double since I've been in office the last four years. So we do have the needed resources there cash-wise to make that happen.
All right, thank you very much. Brian Rowley.
For me, I definitely would never vote for raising taxes. However, if you look at how our national government is set up, we decided that being safe was the number-one priority, and we became the largest military in the world. I don't think that we need to have the largest sheriff's department in the world. But I do think that if we prioritize our public safety, that that is something that will handle itself as long as we make it our priority. Otherwise, you know, we let our good officers go somewhere else where they get paid more than that was our choice and not that officers, because we let them go.
Thank you very much.
Well, first of all, we have the sheriff of the year, okay, in our county, awarded by the Sheriff's Association throughout the state. And I think it starts there. I mentioned earlier that Sheriff Arbon runs a zero-based budgeting process, which allows him to be in tune with his expenses and the way in which he deals with the challenges that come from the community. So I don't think an elected official has any more insight than Sheriff Arbon. So I would listen to my sheriff, and I would listen to, I would look seriously at his budget and the way in which they put him together, and then also look for efficiencies. There are efficiencies that can be measured, objectives can be measured. And I think that public safety as the number-one goal will be funded by taxpayer dollars as a priority, but efficiency is part of the process as well. But I think we've got two good things going for us. We have an excellent sheriff, and we have a zero-based budgeting process. And I think that works for the tax-paying citizens as well as the community.
Thank you very much. Onto our next question. What is your view on jail expansion? If you're against it, what do you propose to solve the problems the current jail design is causing, specifically the growing medical and mental health needs of those incarcerated? We're going to start with John Thompson on that one.
Right now, I'm not against it. I did have a brief by the sheriff a couple of weeks ago on why this is needed. It was supposedly supposed to happen maybe 20 years ago, and for some reason, it did not. So the brief I got, I would support that, as well as the possible bond that would go along with that. So far to date, I have not heard any really reasons, other than speaking to somebody informally, other than the on, other than the taxes, that's gonna be raised to support it, but other than that, I haven't heard the reasons why not, why we should not do this. It's required, we have to do it.
Thank you very much. Gage Fror.
So jail expansion is something that we've actually been discussing for at least the last six months, sometimes on a weekly basis. So obviously, the answer to that is I do fully support the jail expansion. We need the medical and we need the mental health facilities in there. When I came into office, I was actually up in another conference and learned that a number of counties were getting sued because of lack of medical attention. I came back and met with the sheriff, he'd actually been down in Dallas. At that point in time, we switched the medical facility from an ongoing basis with personnel. We subcontracted it out, that reduced our liability, but a lot of counties were getting sued for millions of dollars because of the lack of medical attention. So the medical's needed, jail expansion is needed, it's not that easy. We've got the Kiesel facility, we need to make sure that we have a work program, work release program in place. That all has to come together as we look at the total expansion. It's not one problem solves all, we have to look at the entire picture to come up with the right answer, and it's gonna take some money to do it.
All right, thank you very much. Brian Rowley.
I definitely was impressed when I met with Sheriff Arbonne and went over his plans for the expansion. Like John said, my only thing is raising the taxes to get that. I think mental health is, should be the number-one priority in jails is addressing the mental health of the inmates and trying to make it so that those with the mental health conditions aren't just getting let out, coming right back and increasing their criminal record when we're focusing on the wrong thing. As far as the medical, of course, I don't believe that most jails are set up properly to handle medical at all. And so I think it's a great idea, I just don't like the taxes on it.
Thank you very much. William Olson.
Yeah, well, early on in my campaign, I got a little bit depressed looking at legislation called JRI, that kind of reduced the state prison population by reducing drug laws from felonies to misdemeanors, started flooding the county jails, plus they assigned a bunch of taxpayer money to help address mental health issues in jail. That burden kind of moved the county jails. I went a little ballistic early in my campaign and misread some of the budget numbers and I panicked, but, and going back and looking at it and talking with the sheriff, it's important that the jail, that the services in the jail are managed in the jail, and it's very difficult, from what I understand, bringing the public into the jail to provide services. Contracting the services, what the commission did previously, takes the jail and the sheriff out of hiring and firing and managing employees. I think it's a prudent and more efficient way to deal with it. I just feel strongly that mental health is a number-one issue for our community, not necessarily our jails.
Thank you very much. Sharon Bolos.
I do appreciate, as others have mentioned, the sheriff's invitation for us to tour the jail facilities and understand the need that they have. I know that it's long overdue. I do support the jail expansion and specifically the growing medical and mental health needs. The medical needs, I think, are probably the basis of most lawsuits if those aren't being met. The mental health needs, if we aren't addressing those needs while those individuals are in jail, then I think we see the revolving door. I think we see people in and out of jail if they just serve their time and they're released. They have to be taken care of, we have to provide the resources for them to be taken care of, and I understand that not every criminal will make a choice to make their life better. But for those who are willing to make changes, we ought to be investing in those, because otherwise, as a community, we're paying for their actions over and over again.
Thank you very much. On to our next question. According to the Weber County Sheriff and members of his executive staff, information and data show jail expansion is needed and overdue. Do you support this jail expansion, why or why not? We have some sub-questions here to include as well. If you support the expansion, what are your plans and commitment to see through jail expansion completed? As well as, if you don't, how will you address medical and space needs? Shannon Francis, if you're ready, you can answer, if not, we can skip over you and come back.
Please.
Okay, well, we'll move on and come back to you.
Unless, did I understand correctly, you're asking about expansion and what I think about it?
Yes. So this is about expanding the jail. We're having some capacity issues as well as needing to expand medical and mental health needs for those that are incarcerated. So we're asking if you support that and what your plans are to follow through with that promise, and if not, why, and how you'll deal with the repercussions otherwise.
I do believe that there should be a partnership between mental health and healthcare at the jail. And Sharon mentioned it a little bit about it's a revolving door. If those aren't getting, if people aren't getting the help that they need. I know that Bill thinks that that's not the proper role of a jail, but a lot of people, even when they're first admitted or when they come in to be evaluated, what's the situation? So I definitely think there is a place, and even if the monies come in from a partnership with county mental health or whatever, I do believe in expansion.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go on to Gage Fror.
So just to clarify the question, you wanna know how we're gonna fund it, the commitment?
Yeah, not necessarily how we're going to fund it, but more rather how you are going to follow through on this promise. You can include funding in that answer if you wish.
Okay, well, so I've stated previously that obviously I believe jail expansion's a necessary asset for this county. How we go about that, it becomes a critical part, and how we share the cost of that also becomes necessary. There's two or three sources of funding that the county has available. The first is what we call our special projects funding, which we do have some money in special projects. There's a committee that gets together every quarter that looks at the county projects and prioritizes those. I know that this jail expansion is on one of those issues. We also need to go to the legislature. IGG, the committee down there that funds state building, I actually chaired for eight years. So we need to go to the state. The state needs to participate in this expansion, they need to participate by putting some dollars in. Lastly, I think we need to ask the public for support with a general obligation bond. The bond would have to be voted on, I don't think the current commission would be in favor of putting this on a lease revenue bond, so this is gonna come down to the public of whether they support this. It's an important issue, you can't force this, and you can't fund this with one particular source.
All right, thank you very much.
For me, seeing, I think the jail should be a safe place for people, it should have enough room. I think one major thing that could benefit, other than this expansion, which I do very much agree with the mental health as well as the medical expansion, would be not keeping people locked up for low-level drug crimes and otherwise victimless crimes. A lot of these people are in a bad place and, you know, they're hurting themselves, but locking them away, especially without the mental health capabilities to help them, really just does nothing for them. So adding more beds, not really what I would suggest as far as, you know, expanding the jail, but more the mental health and medical.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, I support the jail expansion. I know I supported it last time we expanded it on promises from the state to, for us to manage their parolees and pay us certain amounts of money. Well, they failed to do that every year as they announced to their balanced budgets down in Salt Lake City. I was proud of Sheriff Arbonne when he came onboard to get rid of that contract, we were getting paid 50 cents on the dollar. So I think as long as we analyze the size of the prison or the jail and as the community's growing, the funding sources, and there has to be more than one, I am in favor of the general obligation bond road. I think the sheriff's department gave a great presentation early on on a possibility of a general obligation bond, and I think based on the expansion plans at that time, we were looking at about a $62 fee added to our property taxes or to cover that bond. So I would be in favor of that, and I would trust our officials with respect to the design and the size of that jail.
Thank you very much.
In my support of the jail, my commitment to the plans to move forward would be about the funding. I think that's what this is about. The sheriff has let the commissioners, the current commissioners, all of the commission candidates know how important this is for his department, and if we're gonna support that, we need to help them with the funding. Numerous sources of funding is an important thing. As far as getting money from the state, that's important, they need to be invested in that. If we start to look at the GO bond, which by the way I support, I would love to see the taxpayers vote on that. A GO bond allows the public to invest in the jail, and the important key component to that is educating the public and helping them understand what our law enforcement professionals need in order to do their jobs correctly. If we can communicate that correctly, we'll get the buy-in, we'll get the support. The communication is the key aspect of getting the public behind this project.
All right, thank you very much. John Thompson.
Law enforcement is expensive, by definition. So the question to me would come down that once the process starts, which now I'm assuming it's gonna be some type of a law enforcement violation, that's how that individual gets into the system. Now, how do you break it down from prosecution and separating if there are also mental and/or medical issues involved? So how can you break that down and how can you implement that process to especially move it out if it's not gonna be, or it doesn't have to be, a law enforcement issue? If we have to do that, which I think the next question is gonna deal with this, there's a lot of constitutional as well as state laws saying, once that person is in custody, there is an obligation we have to that person, regardless of what the crime is, that we have to do that. So now, what's gonna be the best way to fund it, to support it, and to do it the most effective and efficient way possible?
Thank you very much. This will be our last regularly scheduled question, and then we'll open up for audience questions. So if you've got any questions you want to ask, get those going in your mind, and we'll get to that next. As for our final regular question here, at the Weber County Jail, medical and mental health services are provided to inmates. Should these two services be provided to inmates, and why? Going with Gage Fror first.
Well, the short answer to that is, we don't have a choice. We're directed by the state, again, to provide those. Once we put somebody into our facility, we're required to provide them medical. That's our duty, that's our job as prescribed by the state. The question should be, how do we best provide those medical? Not, should we? And we made the decision a year, a year and a half ago, when we decided to subcontract that to an independent party that had the ability, they had the staff, and they could do that at a less expensive cost to the county, and they gave better service. So we're providing that service that's dictated, again, by the state, and also, we need to make sure that we meet the mental health issues, because a majority of those people that are now in the jail are there because of mental health. We need to make, and that's one reason for the jail expansion, that gives us the ability to cure that, so we don't see the revolving door. We wanna make sure that we, from a medical need and a mental health need, that once they go out, we don't get them back. And that's a reason that we need to provide that, we need to provide that in an efficient, cost-effective manner.
All right, thank you very much. Back to Brian Rowley.
I absolutely think that those should be offered in jail. We take these people out of their lives and put them behind bars, they no longer have the opportunity to go see a therapist, to go see their doctor. I've seen, you know, people in excruciating pain be told that they could have one Tylenol every 12 hours, something like that. Things like that are, in my opinion, inhumane. We need to remember that the inmates at the county jail are still people, and they are not just cattle to be thrown in there until their time is up.
Thank you very much. On to William Olson.
Yes, this was a tough one for me. Mental health, when I was growing up, mental health issues were provided by the community and by the taxpayers. It's now come on by state law to, for the county jails to provide it. I think we have to rely more on how the, our sheriff and how his staff and the chief see implementing that process. I agree with Gage, you know, it's not about whether we provide it, it's about how it's funded and how effectively it's funded. And again, I would have to rely on the expertise of those involved in the process and simply just try to carry that message as best I could to the citizens of the county to support this kind of service. But I think if we look at the data, and it is supposed to be data-driven, and I think we're getting better at providing the data, 20% of the inmates are spending about 80% of the money on these chronic offenders, and I'm not sure how we deal with that yet, but that's gonna be a huge concern with respect to efficiencies in law enforcement.
Thank you very much. On to Sharon Bolos.
When the JRI mandates came down to the local law enforcement from the state, we took that burden, willingly or unwillingly, it doesn't matter. We trust the sheriff. The sheriff is the professional who has been elected by the public to share his expertise on how we fund this, how we facilitate this, and how we meet those requirements. He understands better than any elected official on the commission what those requirements need. If we have a standard that we have to meet, how do we do that? If we have a standard that we have to meet, how do we pay for that? If we have a standard that we have to meet, how do we involve his team? We have to rely on the professionals. It's a mandate that we can't get out from under, and by the way, I've already said that I support it, I don't think there's any other way to keep that from being a revolving door, but it's a mandate that we're under, and our sheriff needs to give us direction on how that's implemented.
Thank you very much. John Thompson.
Yes, we have to support it. Nothing else, constitutionally, I think by being fellow human beings, we have to support it. If nothing else, also by being Americans, we have to support it. But the one other thing I would try to look at is that, once we handle this or start looking into this, let's try also not to just treat the symptoms, but let's try to find the cause, and that's what Bill would mention in regard to the data being available, is that if somebody, if not us, is also, are also looking into what's causing these problems. Mental health is a big issue, obviously, in the country, how big it is in Weber County, and can we stop it or try to prevent it or publicize it more to get additional help and resources? It's just like breaking down, let's get the right people involved that have that expertise and professionalism and see what they have to say about this, and let's try to stop it before it gets to the situation or the cause of the area of law enforcement.
Thank you very much. On to Shannon Francis.
So, ditto to what we've heard. Of course, we do need to address it, and I'm thinking along the same lines as John. To me, it's a systematic issue. We see all the shootings that are occurring across the nation, and I think it's indicative of a society that's, has, is ill. And how do we address that? How do we do intervention upfront? What groups do we work with? What do we do to support families in Weber County? For instance, the housing that's going in in Ogden City and in different places in the county, there's no places for communities, groupings for people to integrate, it's just pavement, there's nowhere for children and youth, and I say that in about 10 to 15 years, we're going to see the result of the
Thank you very much.
The housing that's going on right now.
We're out of time there.
Let's fix the problem upfront.
Okay, if we have anyone in the audience that wishes to ask a question, come on down here and I'll hand you the microphone. If we've got any takers, just come on down. No need to be shy. I don't bite too much.
I'm going to feel really bad if no one comes and asks me questions, because I've only got to answer two.
Let's see, if we were to go a little bit further on expansion and housing, how are we going to go through and solve that at a county level? Go through and Go through and help create more equitable housing is the best way I can state this. Start here and go on down.
Well, being that we are in a free market, there's, we can either mandate that, which I would be totally against, or we can work with people and try to find like-minded individuals with the property, with the money, come up with ways to reorganize things. I, you know, drove past the old RC Willie today and I was thinking to myself that if that were properly renovated, that could, other than the fact that it's across the street from a high school, be something that would be great for housing people, you know, that are struggling, things like that. And then just working with developers and trying to come up with ways that we can get developers to be a little more fair to the people instead of just taking all their money without actually forcing them to do that. I think the people have good hearts and we'll find them.
Thank you.
Well, you don't build a house without a blueprint and you don't build a community without a master plan. So I'm a big believer in master plans and it's what you conceptualize the growth of the community over time. I think we run into trouble sometimes when we go after the flavor of the month and try to fix things based on short-term issues. But I'm also a believer in private property. To me, it's an inalienable right and those who own property have every right to do with it what they choose. And I think as long as master plans are laid out, there's going to be some changes required. And I can tell you that there is a tax commission that will hear property owners' concerns if they don't get what they want to do with their property. I'm afraid that most of the criteria that the tax commission uses is subjective, so it's going to be very difficult if they're voting against you to win. But I think we have to work together as a community and we have to respect private property, and we have to build our master plans so that we can manage these kinds of things as best we can.
Thank you.
Adopting general plans that you believe in is the number one thing you can do to help the community accept the growth that we're seeing. And that involves public participation, understanding what they would like to see, and incorporating that into those master plans. We have general plans in the county that are overseen by the commissioners, both in western Weber County and in the upper valley. It's very important for the community to be drawn into that process so that we can understand what they'd like to see. Once those plans are adopted and as they are executed, it's important to bring the parties together. I found in my experience in West Haven that bringing a developer who's the landowner together with the concerned residents who will be impacted, those conversations, though they may be lively, can be very productive as the developers understand the needs of the existing residents. Usually, it's not that hard to accommodate their concerns. And in my experience, developers have been more than happy to try to put some of those concerns at ease. So I think involving the public is the key thing that we can do.
Thank you.
Another question I am just not that familiar with. I am familiar with roughly, as I said before, 262,000 people in Weber County, 20,000 of those supposedly live in the unincorporated park. So are you talking about the homeless problem in that area? You're talking about the homeless problem to include also the 15 cities in the county. I know, and I've never been a builder or a construction guy, but I see a lot of vacant big buildings around here. If we're calling to give people some shelter, get back to one of the other questions, the will of the people, if we want to be human, if we want to be kind and generous and to have some type of at least shelters available, the old First Security Bank building, for instance, the other buildings that are down on the northeast corner of 24th and Wall, could they be used or made to at least provide some type of shelter with the appropriate security for these homeless people? That's something I'd be looking at also if not between election day and taking office, but the first 90 days.
Thank you very much.
Yes, master plans are important, but I think we have to recognize that this is a larger, again, a larger societal issue right now that's going on nationally. And what can we do locally to address this? And again, I think it comes back to partnerships. I know Representative Waldrop has currently been working on developing and growing a program where we work with the local investors, Zion's Bank, hospitals, to help provide down payments in programs where they eventually will be paid back and that money used for seed money to provide additional homes. These are being used for service workers, police officers, nurses, middle-class people. And I think it's a great idea. We need to develop and increase these partnerships.
Thank you very much.
Well, affordable housing is something that we've taken very serious in Weber County. I actually sit on the Weber Housing Board. Just recently, we were able to obtain a $1.9 million grant by work of friends in the legislature through the governor's office and planning and budget that we'll be building shortly on Ninth and Wall, a 48-unit affordable housing unit. That's where it needs to start. We need to have communities that are committed to locations that allow those type of affordable housing units to come in. I visited today with a little place down in Davis County called the Red Barn Academy. They tell me they're going to put 86 units up almost immediately. We need to bring our nonprofits in, like the Red Barn Academies. We need to make sure that these people, when they come out of jail, have the opportunity to succeed. Nonprofits like the Red Barn Academy, we need to duplicate that. We need to give the opportunities for these people so they don't go back into jail, the opportunity for housing and jobs and the workforce. You can do that by using nonprofit and the resources that are available through the state and somewhat in the county.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else got a question that they wish to ask? This will be a final call here if not. All right then. So we're going to go through and each candidate will be allotted a one and a half minute closing. So we'll go ahead and start with William Olson, following the previously established pattern.
Okay, well, thanks for the opportunity to speak to your organization here today. You know, times are going to be tough here in the next four years. Inflation at 9% now. Our general fund budget for 2022 is about $93 million. That doesn't take into account 9% inflation, spending that money throughout the year. There's going to be some big challenges with respect to roping in expenses, also looking for more efficiencies in the way in which we use taxpayer dollars. Because quite frankly, the value of a taxpayer dollar is going down with inflation while the need for government value is increasing, we're moving in opposite directions. This is going to take some real leadership, the county commission, to manage this process. And I'm looking forward to bringing some of my leadership skills from business and working with the county and doing the best we can to solve some of these issues. But it's not going to be easy. I am a single father with two teenage daughters. I run a household. I've seen the cost of living go up drastically in the last six months alone. I know I'm not alone out there, and I know our agencies and our public servants and everybody are going to be faced with this issue. And it's really going to take some working together to do the best we can to get through this situation with this inflationary spending.
Thank you very much. Sharon Bollos.
I'm going to forego part of my time in my closing to address one thing that I was hoping would come across in a question, and that is the mental health of first responders and public safety personnel. I feel passionate about that, and I'm well aware that those who put their lives on the line to protect us every day go home with some mental baggage that we will never understand. When I was on the Weber Fire District Board, we had this conversation numerous times and were able to lobby for the legislature to give support to agencies like the ones you work with. And it's important. We need to understand what we are putting these men and women through for the cause of our public safety, and we need to support the issues that they carry along and the burdens that they carry with them into their future. Again, I'm Sharon Bollos. I have the background and the experience, the education necessary to serve as your county commissioner. My accounting degree gives me a solid financial background. I recently also completed my Master of Public Administration, which is a strength in the administrative portion of the Weber County Commissioner responsibilities. I feel confident that the partnerships that I have made in my experience as the mayor throughout the county, both with other mayors and with personnel in the county, will be beneficial as I move forward and serve you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Thompson?
First of all, thank you for showing up and being attendant-eyed as well as the viewers and for being engaged. This is one of our American foundations of democracy. Also, thanks the Weber Fraternal Order of Police for hosting this. This morning on my walk, spoke to a couple of neighbors, and then I walked on the east bench in Ogden, noticed the low-hanging clouds, and I kept thinking of the drought, what the mountains, as green as they're going to be probably. But going by the ballpark, nine, 10-year-olds out there just playing ball and yelling and screaming and enjoying the first week off of school, and was thinking what a fortunate place I am living in at this time, in a fortunate county. From that, I'd ask you to still stay engaged, be active, ask questions. These are the questions now, but that doesn't mean they're going to be the same ones, especially from Labor Day on when the general election goes till election day. So I would welcome your questions and comments, and I appreciate the fellow candidates and hearing their views, opinions, and positions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Onto Shanna Francis.
Yes, I would like to also say thank you for participating tonight and for hosting this event. You know, under the Constitution, our proper role of government is to protect our person and our properties. And if we don't have law and order, if we don't have a civil society where rules aren't obeyed and they're not enforced and we don't have that, we don't have anything. And that's the number one priority for me, is to restore that sense of people feeling safe in their homes and their property, not having vehicles stolen here and there within the county. While our officers, I feel like they're stretched really, really thin. We're having a difficult time keeping their salaries up to par so Weber County can compete. And that's a priority for me, to make sure our officers are compensated to the degree that they deserve to be. They put their lives on the line every day, and it's getting, becoming a more and more difficult job to do, and a big thank you to them. I support them wholeheartedly.
Thank you very much. Gage Fror.
Thank you. Want to thank those people that took time out, be with us tonight, fellow people here on the dais with me that have taken their time to put their name on the ballot. So as I mentioned early in my opening comments, this is all about scarce resources. How do we take those dollars that the public trusts us with and put those to the best use? Public safety, obviously, is a huge issue for not only our counties but across the state. I firmly believe in my work with the sheriff and the sheriff's department this last four years, we're better prepared to take on this uncharted territory with our high inflation, our $5-plus gas, the grocery store bills. If those, if you haven't been in the grocery store lately, you'll notice a substantial increase. Our public officials recognize that in the county, and how do we best preserve those public safety personnel, our deputies and sheriffs out there that put their lives on the line for us? We do that by giving them the opportunity to use those scarce resources in the best ability that they decide. When I came into this office, I met with the sheriff and said, "I'm not a micromanager. I'm not going to tell you where to put these dollars. We're going to give you as many dollars as we can possibly after we look at our priorities, and you need to decide along with your chiefs where to spend it." He's done exactly that. That's what my plan is, is that I'm not, I'm not an expert in where those dollars should go, but I can tell you this, with our sheriff and with their chiefs, those dollars that we put into this and the rainy day fund that we've now been able to save up, will go to great resources and protect our community and use those taxpayer dollars very wisely.
Thank you very much. And Brian Rowley?
Well, you know, for starters, in this room, I'm surrounded by some of the most respectable people that I could have ever met in my life, but I would like to state that while my platform might look like I am anti-the sheriff's department, anti-police, I'm more of a, more for, you know, everyone having their personal liberties as far as what the police do, I feel like they're incredibly important to have and I have the utmost respect for them and for what they do for our community. As far as my political background, it's very, very short, but I've just always done everything that I could and made every one of my dreams come true. So I feel like I will, you know, as county commissioner, be the best that I could ever be.
All right. Thank you very much.
I just want to jump up here and tell everyone, thank you for coming to the debate. I know it can be hard to get to these events based on everyone's personal life, and it's important that everyone remain engaged in their civics and the community, who they elect to lead their communities, and the missions they want to accomplish, not just because it affects the community, but it also impacts the public servants. When we talk communities that are across the nation, there's a lot of ways people approach or leaders approach that really negatively impact the officers or firefighters. And I just want to compliment the leaders that we have in our lodge boundaries, which is Weber Morton County, that we have very supportive county attorneys and leaders, chiefs, sheriffs, and that goes a long ways. Again, we're very thankful for all the candidates coming out and be willing to answer questions that have been geared towards law enforcement as well as public concerns. It takes a lot of time to take a position like this and try to get elected. My scale is nowhere near what these guys are going through when I run for my elections of my association. So I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing, whether or not you get the position, you put a lot of work in, and it's good that there's competition because it keeps everyone pushing to do their best, and we appreciate everyone and all the work that you did. Again, thank you everyone for participating. Our video did go up and down a little bit towards the beginning. Most of it, it did make it online. We are going to post the entire video just a little bit. I've got to get home, download it, upload it, and it'll be on there for everyone to see if you have any questions. Shanna, we're going to send you the questions and give you the opportunity to provide a response that we can attach into that link as well, and I'll talk to you a little bit more after that, after this about that, okay? Again, thank you. Just want to give a round of applause to all the participants, the candidates running for the positions they are. I know that Gage has prior engagements, so I'm not going to hold this up any longer. Again, appreciate it, and everyone have a good night.